Call the meeting to orders. As usual, we will start with public comment. If you have a comment, raise your hand. Or if you are the sole attendee of public, I will go ahead and recognize you. Come to the podium, face the board please, and you have three minutes to state your case. Yes, sir?
Thank you, sir. My name is M. Joffrey Carlton, 224 Sawyer Road in Lee, New Hampshire. I am here to talk about the MOU for the town of Lee. And I would like to see if Maximum Velocity LLC could be considered in managing the facilities in the town of Lee. We are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) operation. We are based in Lee, New Hampshire at 62 Caleb Highway, Suite 125. Heard the information that is being passed around. Maximum Velocity would like to call into consideration a few things that we feel could benefit the town substantially. We believe that we would like to make a $2,500 rental revenue towards the town or if those towards the Recreation Commission, which we believe it should. And then there, we also feel that the person managing those and using those facilities should pay two-thirds of the electrical cost, not half of the electrical cost, because two-thirds of that is more or less used by a recreation organization and not by the We feel Maximum Velocity, at the same, that it would be nice to have a change throughout nonprofit within the town of Lee, working with citizens of Lee. I was on the Rec Commission for over eight years and was instrumental in helping build that facility. I know the ins and outs of that field considerably. For example, that baseball field is at a 1% pitch. That outfield was put on solely by sponsors. The pitch that is rectangular, which can be used in multi-sports, is crowned so that it takes care of properly. It's irrigated. I've closed irrigation. I've set irrigation up. I can remember going out and turning on the generator just to make sure that those fields wouldn't burn out during the summertime. So we'd like to present this opportunity to the selectmen and be considered. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Scott, any questions?
None at this particular time, no.
What do I have? Just to be sure, we have a good understanding of why. In your mind, what is it that... What's the change? I mean, other than we have okay with bringing a new organization to be responsible rather than the current one, what changes? What isn't happening that you feel should happen?
Field maintenance down there is horrible. I mean, I... Maximum Velocity FC spent $150, $200 reseating the facility out here that we used this past fall. There's divots. This spring, I'll probably go out and put some dirt down myself. We changed our wear patterns considerably out on this field here. I don't believe the wear patterns were changed there whatsoever. I know that when we made a request to utilize the baseball field outfield, I was told that it was used by baseball 100% of the time. I found out they only used it two times a week for about an hour, maybe an hour and a half. So there's lost revenue, lost use for the town. And I saw many of times where the field wasn't used and said it was supposed to be used. So I know that baseball field. I had a friend of mine who loves baseball. Came to me and he goes, "Hey, Joff, this field is hurt." I said, "Yeah." I said, "That outfield track isn't maintained whatsoever. That warning track was put in for the purpose of a warning trap." You know, when a kid's starting to run, you've got a 10 to 12-foot area that you hit and then you can say, "Three strides, four strides, watch out, I'm gonna hit a fence." The infield was overgrown, like there was no tomorrow. When we built that facility, there was a cover for home plate and a cover for the mound. It was never used. It was just left off to the side, put up on a hill, never put back down and used properly. I mean, that's just some of the things that I see.
All right, all right. Thank you.
And that just comes from the heart from somebody who spent countless hours down on that field making it.
I understand. Larry, you have... Is there anything you'd like to...
Since we're going to be talking about the MOU, can I all address Mr. Carlton? He brought his proposal to me earlier this week, or late last week, Friday. And we've already worked out the MOU and Rec Commission with ORYA as we were instructed to do by the select board. And we'll discuss those changes, just some minor ones. I think that we are open to looking at Mr. Carlton's proposal. But at this point in time, we're already, I think, down the road too far with regard to ORYA for this season to make any changes. But we are open to looking at that, going where the select board would like us to go.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody, public?
Are we talking about the changes that the Rec Commission proposed to the MOU? Because I just have some questions.
Sure.
So, under Section 2, A, scheduling and use, the highway supervisor and then the new section in coordination with the town of Lee Recreation Commission shall determine the starting date of the spring, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
Hold on, let me catch up.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the changes that we looked at was changing that in coordination with the Rec Commission. One of the things we feel is that ORYA is part of our budget. And we should have some oversight to ORYA. And we've had some issues. I've discussed those before and I'll be very frank about it. We're not very happy with the way they have maintained the field at Little River Park. I have had to get after ORYA on numerous occasions, especially with the baseball diamonds, to clean them up, which is part of the original, the last two in use anyway, that they're to maintain and they haven't done it. So we would like to... We would like to join with the highway supervisor to...
That's fine. It's just my question was actually just gonna be, would the highway supervisor still be the ultimate decider, as you anticipate this?
Well, I just...
I'm just wondering, I mean, whether you want to say coordination or consultation? You know, at the end of the day, as with just about anything, there has to be one party who has a final say.
Well, it's been the highway supervisor in the past, and we don't have an issue with that. We just like to be part of the...
Yeah, yeah, okay.
...decision-making process and I've discussed it with Steve and, you know.
Okay.
Okay.
That's why we put that in.
Another question?
Go ahead.
If you don't mind?
No.
Section 3F, which I think is a new insertion?
Under the fees?
Yes.
Okay, yes, we did revamp the fees.
Okay. Well, right, the fees were revamped, but cancellations are to be approved by ORYA. Application for reimbursement is to be made to the Rec Commission within 90 days of the end of the season. Is this related to weather? Is that what this was anticipating?
Yeah, primarily weather cancellations or we have to close the field for some reason. It's basically the same procedure that we have been using.
Right.
That really hasn't changed anything. We've just cleaned up the wording a little bit.
Okay, maybe we could just put a reference in to weather, if that's what it's referring to. So in other words, let's just suppose somebody rents the field and they just decide... They... I don't know. The coach is sick. For whatever reason, they're just gonna cancel their usage of it. I'm assuming that's not something that we need to be approved by ORYA. It's just happening. But in other words, if it's weather-related and there's a thunderstorm? I mean, I'm just trying to understand what circumstances would lead to this.
Well, I suppose it's more just common sense use, like you say, weather or field conditions if the fields are not in good shape to play on.
Yeah.
For whatever reason, that ORYA has in the past, as I understand it, made that decision. And we just wanted to leave it that way, basically.
Okay.
I mean, we could put in weather, but I think, is it just for weather? Is that your concern?
No, I'm just... I just didn't know what circumstances you were referring to with cancellations.
Well, we weren't really referring to, okay, we just don't feel like playing, but yet we reserve the field. That wasn't the intent.
Right, okay. So it's weather-related?
That would probably be the majority of the reasons.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought there was something in here about weather cancellations, maybe not. Okay. Yeah, that was it.
We did make a couple of changes as far as the fees. What we're trying to do with that is to simplify it for everyone. And so basically, the multi-use field, we just wanted to make $15 an hour for half the field, $30 an hour for the pole field.
Okay, so in August, some changes were made to distinguish between practices and games. Are you getting rid of that?
Right. I would suggest, yes, we do, because it... What's the difference?
Right.
I mean, you know, let's just keep it simple.
Okay.
We have the Little River Park Back Multi-Use Field at $75 per hour. I'm trying to remember. We took that out of there, yet we... It was brought to my intention that it wasn't included in the facilities' usage group.
Right.
Okay. Probably what we ought to do is just amend that, leave that in there, the back field, but really no charge for that at this point.
And that's what I refer to as the sheep pen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the track back there, right in the back.
Well, again, where they have the sheep demonstrations during the league air.
So actually, that should be left back in the Little River Park Back Multi-Use Field, but that should be modified to no charge on that.
Right.
And then the Little River Park Baseball Field, $25 an hour for that, whether it's game, practice, or whatever, just an hourly fee. Stevens Field, $10 per hour. I mean, obviously, that field's not in great shape, but... And I know that Maximum Velocity has put some work into that and trying to help maintain that a bit.
I noticed on that that people are using it for dog training. Is that an organized thing that's happening or are they just going out there?
I was not aware of that.
At Stevens Field?
Yes. Saw them out there twice. Okay.
I've seen a lot of people, as we come in and out, that are walking their dogs to hit the paths. And then I met two guys that were just using their dog, throwing it out for training.
Retrieving and stuff.
But it wasn't an organized group, it was just a general...
Okay, thank you.
Nice, nice few of you.
And the other change that we'd like to make is the town field in Massway. That really isn't utilized very much, except for some games for Little League and so on. And again, the condition of that field isn't the greatest. Then it was suggested that we not have a fee for that at this time.
Okay. Don't the soccer, I see soccer practice on there?
There is some practice on it, but I mean, it's basically ORYA, so... Again, trying to keep it simple. Might be best that way. And then, of course, the pavilion is no fee. That would stay the same. Just some other housekeeping things, changing the dates for the terms of the agreement. That is, I think, basically what we came up with. The rest of the MOU didn't seem to be an issue at that point. One of the things that I'd like to see about having changed too, and I sort of mentioned this, is that we have... That the Rec Commission has some oversight on ORYA. We are quite concerned with the way they have not only treated the field, but responded to our requests to follow the MOU, such as removing equipment after use and the condition of the fields. The baseball fields are just horrendous and they do need a lot of work. And so quite a few phone calls and emails on my part, the Macload, to try to get this to clean that up and do what the MOU requires. Such a part of our budget, I think that we ought to oversee ORYA. And I think that we have the ability to do that and it would be to the fire to the MOU. So we'd like to see that happen with your approval.
Okay, I understand.
That's what I have on the MOU at this point in time. If I could bring up one other thing with regard to the Rec Commission?
Sure.
We have basically set our program schedule for this year. And our Easter egg hunt will go on on April 20th at the town field, the fishing derby. We've already secured that with the Stevens to use their farm again, and that'll be on Saturday, May 11th. Model Rocket Day, we're looking forward to, is on Saturday, July 20th. And the musical park, we're working, currently working on getting contracts and groups set up for that, which basically will start on the first Thursday in June and then go to the end of August. We don't have a list of performers yet, but once we get that, we'll get it posted.
Are those always Thursdays?
Only Thursday evenings. We are looking to try to either get a food truck in or do something with food along those lines during the Thursday evening events. A couple of other programs that we're looking to try to institute in 2019. We've had several requests, even my wife has been requested. She's heard some requests too, for Model Drone Club. And I know you're interested in that, but we'd like to try to get that off the ground, so to speak. No one intended, but anyway.
UNH has a drone program.
They do.
I think in April, they do a school, which I'm not sure how long it goes, but it's... I think it's a week, but it could be longer. It's an entire program. And it might be interesting to get them involved in putting together this.
Absolutely.
Especially some of the students. They might be willing to jump in and participate with it.
Yeah, great. We're looking at both outdoor and indoor events, so it's something that could go year-round. I want to talk to the school about the possibility of using the gymnasium over there for the indoor events.
Oh, okay, yeah. Because normally, they use an abandoned warehouse or something like that.
We don't have any abandoned... Well, maybe, maybe we could find a abandoned warehouse.
There might be something around.
Never know. Anyway, another thing that we're looking to put in is archery. We've had... We did a survey and we had a lot of interest in that. And we figured that maybe what we could do is if we can get an instructor, somebody to run that program, we can set it up in the back field at Little River Park. It would be a perfect spot for that. We're working on family game nights. That's another thing that we're hoping to institute before too long. So that's where we are with our programs this year. Now, the last time I spoke to you folks, we sort of brought up, broached the issue of lights in the pavilion. Any thoughts on that from the select board, where we can go with that?
I thought...
Funding in the operating budget, correct?
Well, what we're trying to do, because our budget is getting cut significantly, we're trying to figure out right now what monies we're gonna have left over from this year. Because another thing that we'd like to present is to get a cement slab pavilion to the pavilion. And I... We still have... We haven't had a chance to really work on that yet, but that's on the agenda. So I want to see, once we get our programs in place, especially with the vans, how much we're gonna have to pay up for that and so on, what we're gonna have for funds available. And then take a look at next year's budget and see.
I thought we had a conversation with the town electricians and banks about putting lighting in the pavilion, just to get an idea of what it would take, but I don't remember. I don't remember.
That wasn't part of our conversation when we discussed it, but...
I mean, it'd be good to get an estimate of the costs. And also, for the slab, I was inquiring as to whether, does it have to be for the entire pavilion or is it just for a stage light?
No, going with the original program, the original proposal for the pavilion was a complete slab for the...
Complete slab?
Entire space, yeah. I don't think a half slab or anything like that would make a whole lot of sense, because it would leave an uneven floor.
Okay. Scott, anything?
No, sounds like two things we should pursue, to find at least how much those things cost.
Well, we'll work on getting a proposal together for the electric.
Yeah, I think that'd be the best thing.
Yeah.
And have to be LED lighting, so it should all run in line with what we're doing.
Can we get a grant?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question in terms of the MOU? In terms of, why is the school district still in there? I know they stuck them in because they're willing to use the field.
Because I think occasionally, they still use the facility?
But why are they singled out versus other institutions or groups that use it?
Why is...
Why are they singled out?
Where are you...
Well, they're referenced in five, like five or six places, so...
Well, if you want to take the Oyster River School District out of there...
Well, they're just like any other organization. There's something special about them.
Well, we actually, I guess we had contemplated that they were special because they were the school district, but if you want to take them out, we can take them out.
Is there... Do we treat them differently?
Well, they have preference over, I guess...
But that's not in here in terms of they get preference. The town gets preference. I don't see any reference of getting any preference besides that.
If you're looking at the proposal that I gave you...
No, I'm looking at the one we have with Oyster River.
It goes the town, Oyster River, then the school district. The Oyster River trumps the school district.
Yes, but the school district trumps other organizations. Yeah, so they are giving preferential treatment.
Are they gonna be using our facilities for any reason?
They do occasionally.
Occasionally? I just don't see them any different than anybody else besides whoever we have as the third party. Why are they getting any preferential treatment? We don't get preferential treatment in their facility, so why are we extending that to them? So I would move that, remove them and they become like their fields.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Scott, what was it you wanted to strike out of that?
I want, I propose to strike out the reference to Oyster River School District throughout.
All reference to them?
Yeah. So that they're treated just like...
Anybody else who wants to use it, they'll go in and want to escape.
Yeah, so whoever the town gets preferential, then whoever the third party is, is next. And then after that, it's everybody.
So would they be charged the fees?
Sure, why not?
I'm just asking the question.
Why not? They charge us.
They charge us.
Why not? Excuse me?
Well, they don't. They don't. They charge us for the custodial fee when we have to use the Massway School for the deliverance session.
That's still a charge.
They don't charge us to use the building.
And we don't charge them to use the building when they be getting it?
That's true.
So...
Scott, Charlie, go ahead.
Sure.
Is this a battle that we want to have at this point?
I don't think it's a battle, Larry. I just think it's, we need to be consistent how we deal with people.
Well, no, I understand that, but we're looking at different governmental entities for usage. And if we, for example, if we want to develop this model drone program and we want to be able to utilize the school gymnasium, for example, do we want to upset the apple cart with that?
They're gonna charge you, Larry, so...
Well, I don't know. What are they?
Well, I think that's a conversation that'll be had when they come to us and say, "Well, we want to, we want to charge you," or "We don't want to charge you, but if you're charging us, we're gonna charge you." I mean, that's what, that's what this is gonna come to, the contest.
Yeah, and do we want to, do we want to address that at this point in time?
Well, I think we're already having it. I mean, it's kind of, you know, it's kind of bubbling, but the fact is, there's times when we wanted to use the facility and they came back and said, "Well, okay, this is, this is why you either can't use it or this is what you have to pay," so on and so forth.
Okay.
So that's, it's been at a low level, but it's been...
Well, you've got other reasons that I'm not aware of, so...
They have meetings here downstairs, which they think that we're their servants and they expect everything, but they don't pay for it. We don't charge them. So I think it's a larger discussion in terms of how we deal with them. It'd be nice if they provided us services and we provided them services. That would be nice. But it can't be they charge for some things and then other things they get for free. I don't know. I think there needs to be some more conversation about that.
Okay, as you consider...
Well, no, I have a better understanding of your point.
We got this. Joe?
So when I presented Larry with the proposal, he said that his recreation meeting is this upcoming week. So that's why he was unable to present everything to his commission.
I understand.
So I'm just asking, last year's wasn't signed until the end of March, which is 30 days plus from today. So I'd just love to have him take that and bring it to his commission so that he can make that proposal to them.
Understand.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Joe. Mr. Bassett.
I got an email from the fireworks company last week. It was a miscommunication on when I said I wanted the Fourth of July. They just assumed it was Friday night, race night. So it came in July 5th. I questioned it. I can't get fireworks in July 4th, so I'd like to use the Friday of the 5th to race on and do the fireworks. But I'd like to, also, if I do for some reason lose the 5th altogether, if I could do the fireworks on the 12th as a rain date. I mean, it's a race night. It's already on the schedule. It's just a matter of getting your blessing that we could have fireworks if we need to that night.
So just so I understand myself, the 12th is already scheduled as a race night?
Yes, it's already a race night.
All you're asking to do is move the fireworks?
Well, I want to move the fireworks to the 5th. I want to scrap the 4th. Race on the 5th, which is a Friday night, which is already on the schedule as a rain date.
And then have fireworks?
Yep. And it's, but if it rains on the 5th, I'd just like to be able to move the fireworks to the 12th.
To the 12th, okay.
But I don't want to have any surprises, and that's why I emailed Denise and made sure that we could all be on the same page so we didn't have any surprises come July.
Okay. Chief, we have any problems with the...
No, we should, but it's the race nights anyway.
Yes. So really, there's no great change. DA, anything on that?
No, we'll just have to modify our license and let everybody know.
Okay. So I need to make a motion to, enter a motion to change the Speedway schedule for fireworks? So I need to make a motion to, enter a motion to change the Speedway schedule for fireworks to as requested. Good. Going to get a second? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. I'm glad I opened the proposal now instead of, because you, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we look over, tell me, do we have a straight?
Election coverage, just query the board to see whether you want to keep the same coverage for the selectmen that we've had the past few years.
Remind you what it is?
I think Selectman Brown takes a morning shift.
Yes, he does.
Selectman Bubbe takes the midday shift, and then I believe Mr. LaCourse comes around five or, five or seven till it ends.
So since Selectman LaCourse isn't here, I think we should give him the larger shift.
So, so you're telling me, you, you think we should give Selectman LaCourse the morning shift?
No, the larger shift. So he can go from 7 until like 11:30, I'll go 11:30 before, and he can do, do it to whenever he needs to.
I agree.
I think that's past your schedule.
I, I know. No, we're okay with the, I think our standard, our standard response.
Okay, thank you. And that's our quote, for anyone who might not know. Next item, as you know, we did execute the agreement with Durham relative to the extension of the Durham UNH waterline to the traffic circle. Their engineers have been working on the project, and we received, as did a number of other property owners, a questionnaire inquiring as to whether we would be interested in connecting to said waterline. I asked department heads and the Conservation Commission whether they thought that there would be any need for that, and everyone indicated no. I mean, we already have fire hydrants, those are already anticipated in the project, so this would be essentially a connection for Old Mill Reserve, which has skinny little access onto Route 4, but the Conservation Commission did not think that we needed that, so. Okay. I will answer the questionnaire, let them know thank you, but no thank you. The next item, Clean Energy New Hampshire, I think is something that Mr. Bubbe can speak to, it was a request made to the TCVC.
Yeah, for the Energy Committee. They thought it would be a good idea, there's this gentleman, I don't have his name in front of me, he is the local representative or local something, he's one of their directors, to present to the TCVC in terms of energy initiatives out there, in terms of rebates, grants, and things like that, and the TCVC talked about, and we thought it would be a better conversation to be had with the select board, not that we wouldn't attend, but I think that would gain some information for the select board in terms of determining solar arrays or whatever it happens to be.
Absolutely.
So I thought it, I'd bring it to our attention and see if we want to schedule something with him, maybe something that the public can attend, of course, you know, if it's public meaning, it would be, but we can find out information, ask him questions. One of the things that keeps getting asked of the Town Center Vision Committee is in terms of, in this proposal, are there solar arrays on the buildings and stuff like that, and we said, well, that's not necessarily part of our charge, it's something that the board is, needs to weigh in on. We got permission to put arrays from the, the public at the last vote, so I think that's something that we as a board need to take the initiative with the Energy Committee, and kind of see if we can move that forward, but I think this would help in terms of give us information about what's out there for rebates, what's out there for grants, things like that.
Yeah, they've been doing a lot of work on that, so, okay.
So can I respond to Barb and Lou?
Yes.
See if they can coordinate?
Yes.
This gentleman to come and have a conversation with us, and we'll work out schedules and stuff like that.
And Larry, I would also like them to talk to you, or you talk to them, about the pavilion and lighting, energy requirements for the pavilion, and what might be out there that they've seen talking to these people that would give us some energy reduction costs? Yeah, that'd be a good, good project for them. Good.
Next item, there's a presentation at the middle school, there's a presentation at the Massway School on March 7th about the middle school, the proposed new middle school, it's a spaghetti dinner. It's free. Well, free.
Free to the public, but somebody pays for it.
Right. Right. Well, yes. There's no charge to go to attend the spaghetti dinner.
Who's cooking?
See the presentation.
Is that special group?
Is it, is it the children that are making the spaghetti, or?
Read the file, it'll tell you who's doing it, it's a group.
So again, it is open to anyone, so if anybody is interested, there's a link, I think we had it in the eCrier, yeah, last Friday, there's a link that you can sign up.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
All right. So a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to enter into non-public session.
With things assigned?
Per.
Yeah.
Per New Hampshire, RSA 91 hyphen A colon 3 2s, per in small a, lowercase a, and capital L, roll call vote required.
L 2?
I'm sorry.
L as well?
Yes, we need to have an L.
Okay.
What did I finish?
Is that it?
What did I forget?
Is that it?
Did you do the roll call later?
No, no, he hasn't got a second yet. Are we done?
A minute. Here.
Okay. Sign, seal, deliver. Well, it's coming out now?
Yep.
Thank you.
Second?
Roll call vote, Selectman Bubbe? Selectman Brown? Yes. There we go.
You later.
All right, Larry. Make a motion to seal, non-public session minutes.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, roll call vote required, Selectman Bubbe?
Yes.
Selectman Brown? Yes. Somebody sent after the line. Is that your horn? Make a motion to adjourn? Oh, is there any unfinished comments, unfinished business?
Two things. One, reminder, the training seminar is this Thursday from 9 until 12.
This Thursday?
Yep, so provide us food, you will make the food and.
Yeah.
Where's it going to be? He downstairs or here?
Here. The second thing is, the Heritage Commission is requesting the board's permission to put up banners around town like they have in the past two years, so we need the board's permission to make the request to ever source. Co-op is okay with it.
And what did I say?
The same thing they said before.
Which was?
Yeah, well, there's a one for Little River Park, there's a banner for Little River Park, there's three of them, there's one for Farmer's Market, there's multiples of each of these, Farmer's Market, there is a new one, which is Welcome to Lean, which is going to be produced probably later this week, so there's four different ones. Wait, I'm missing one. It's a patriotic one. It's like, that like stars and stuff like that. The only one you didn't see last year was the welcome one, because she was still working on that one, so it's a very nice one, so.
Can I ask about the barn plaques?
We're working on that. We've got, to talk about plaques, we've got the ones for, the ones on the state register, we've asked the other people in town who won properties around the state register if they'd like to have a plaque, and we're in the process of doing that, and we're working on barn plaques, we're going to do up a, I want to say approved, but it's a prototype, they're probably going to be a different color, same size, but working up, and we talked about that at the last meeting, so we're working on that, so that's coming too.
Okay, great.
So, do I have the board's permission to request from EverSource permission to put up banners?
You have this board. Yes, you have the board.
Do you need a motion, or does that?
No.
So I just need your assistance to fill out that form?
Yep.
I think one of us has, sorry, because somebody has.
Somebody has to sign it, yeah.
Somebody has.
Okay.
Now you can do a motion to adjourn if you want.